We are doing everything possible and every tool that's in the City Revere's toolbox is being used to make sure that we slow the spread of this virus. And although there hasn't been a confirmed case in the City Revere yet, "yet" is a big word because it is going to happen and we're prepared for that. And we know that it's only a matter of time before something does happen and somebody is positive in the City Revere. And I know that there's going to be a level of panic that comes along with that. I want to ensure people that when that does happen, we are prepared. We have been working tirelessly to make sure that we're prepared for that. The biggest message that I can present to all of you tonight and to anyone listening or watching at home is to stay home to the best of your ability. And it's a little funny to say that standing in front of you outside of my home, but we want people to stay home and we want people to know that city services are going to continue. We're going to do what we can to provide those virtually, but we really are encouraging folks to stay home. And that's why we closed City Hall to the public and that's why we've taken the measures that we've taken to close the library, close public spaces. And we will continue to have, you know, I have ongoing conversations with regional mayors, with the governor's office, with folks up and down state federal government, making sure that we're on top of whatever is coming because this is such a fluid and dynamic situation. As all of you know, things have changed almost by the day. And so we're constantly meeting, we're constantly kind of using our contacts to figure out what's going on and figure out how best to move. So with that, there are a number of things that we've done. I've talked a little bit about the lunch service that's been provided. We are having ongoing conversations with our business community because we know this, I mean, if you look at the stock market and you look at what's happening in the private industry, we know there's going to be a deep economic impact. And, you know, I'm not going to, I guess I can talk about it a little bit, but we've asked for a million dollars out of the stabilization fund. That is just, just in case. You know, I think it's great that the governor is allowing folks to deficit spend, but we are in the financial position to be able to say we're going to dedicate this money. We have a, I have a bond rating call next week and the ability to say, hey, we've got money in our savings account, we're ready to dedicate it. The council is on board with that. They understand the levity of the situation and regardless of, you know, a million dollars, it's not much when you hear people talk about 15 billion, 15 billion, all different numbers that get thrown out, but we're doing our part to make sure that everyone that is in the city and works in the city is, has the resources available to them to make sure that we're prepared for whatever happens. I will end by saying that the one thing that I'm really encouraged by is a number of people who have stepped up to volunteer. It's really, you know, all of us know how resilient the City Revere is and I think it's no shock to anyone to know that folks have been stepping up to volunteer. We did with the, with the help of Ruben Cantor and our director, you know, our director of innovation and data management, he's been able to get these things up quickly and I have to thank him for all of his great work over the last couple of weeks. But to be able to let the residents know, hey, we're going to have a formalized process where if you want to volunteer, because I can't tell you how many text messages I got saying, hey, how can I help? What can I do? Well, go sign up for it and we'll get in touch with you and make sure we're doing the outreach that we need to do to take advantage of that. So it really is incredible to be the mayor of this city and it's incredible to be the mayor during this time when I know everyone steps up, when our resiliency shows and when we, you know, step up to the plate. So I want to thank all of you for your help and your support. We had a phone call this morning, we're going to continue those phone calls, probably have daily phone calls going forward. It may not be much tomorrow, but three days from now, this could be a whole different situation. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that and everyone understands that we're fully prepared for that. And I'm lucky to have the team and we're all lucky to have the team. The residents are lucky to have the team that we have in place to make sure that we respond to this international pandemic the way that our residents deserve. With that, I will turn it over to Kim Hanton, who has been, who I've named as the director of our COVID response team. I want her to just talk a little bit about what she's doing. She talked a little bit about it today on the phone call, but I want to make sure she has an opportunity to chat and I want Dr. Kong to be able to present to you some of the things that she's seeing and she's somebody that, whose time is incredibly valuable, especially at this point. So I really appreciate the time that she's given to us and that she's given to the residents the last couple of weeks because she's been there every time that we had a question about something, she was willing to make time for us. So I'll turn it over to those folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I guess if you have any questions, maybe we can get, we can get our folks to speak and then maybe I'll stick around for questions if anyone has any.
I just want to say thank you for what you have done in the last two weeks. You've been, kudos to you. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. It's my job. Thank you.
Challenging times. I just wanted to start with, we are being led by our board of directors, our chair. She has been fabulous in guiding me 100% of the way from the medical model of care because that is not my specialty and I really rely on Dr. Kong every step of the way. But what I'm going to talk a little bit about is the emergency response team that we did put in place and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kong. So we rolled this out this morning, oh, sorry, I'm short, sorry. We worked a great deal on this over the weekend and I can't thank Ruben enough. Without Ruben, I wouldn't have been able to pull this off. The technology that he's been, that he's allowed me to participate in has been really, really helpful. So Ruben is a strong member of our emergency response team, so please recognize that. We have, we put different things in different categories so that we could respond to this situation in a methodical and an organized way. And we're trying to keep people in lanes so that everybody isn't crossing over and that people are responding and they're answering to a chain of command. And then we have opportunities to bring everyone together. So let me just kind of go down the list on really the categories that we have in place. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. I, you know, I'm speaking because I've been doing this for the last three days, so, you know, forgive me if I'm just automatically assuming that you know what I'm talking about. So if I'm missing a point, please ask. So we put a team together, it's called the case management team. It's the state and regional coordination. So the responsibility of this individual is really to pull a team together to respond to information that we receive from the community in regards to possible presumptive positives, you know, possible contaminations. And that team is out there to really do the legwork and communicate as well as they're the lead in the Maven system, which is the system with the state, from the state where we get reports. We get them all the time, but at four o'clock every day is an update. And we, our case management leader is the one that takes a look at that, but also is, as I said, it's coming in from all ends and she has a team that's boots on the ground, making the phone calls and really investigating any of the reports that we're getting. We have an outreach coordinator and the outreach coordinator's responsibility is to really oversee the vulnerable population, the seniors, the disabled, the veterans, the youth and the immigrants. So that position has a lot of our departments under it. So the division heads of the departments that I just mentioned are working very collaboratively with the outreach coordinator. We have a wellness coordinator and our wellness coordinator is working very closely with Revere Cares. And the responsibility is to really take a look at, you know, what the food assistance may be needed and financial impact and translation of, you know, for immigration, for immigrants and communication, outreach and wellness, mental health and trauma. Because that's another big thing that, you know, people forget at times that right now a lot of the behavioral health outpatient programs are closing. So they're going to a telehealth model, which means that the clinicians are, the prescribers are going to be doing this via phone. And so it's really going to cause some confusion and some chaos for this vulnerable population and we may see a surge, you know, in wellness calls that are needed, you know. So this is really, you know, the direct contact of this wellness coordinator to really keep us all informed and possibly come up with better ideas. You know, another piece of this that's really very near and dear to my heart, as most of you know, when we talk about, you know, the surge of an epidemic and, you know, this is a pandemic, but, you know, my background is working on the opioid epidemic and, you know, my role in that was to decrease exposure, you know, so that we could flatten the curve of overdose. And unfortunately, we may see a surge in this, you know, during this pandemic. And so this is, you know, and the wellness coordinator will, in conjunction with me, you know, I'm always there for every one of these folks and individuals to really kind of, you know, to help support them and give them whatever resources that we need to really man this. So that is our wellness coordinator. Then we have obviously our logistics, which is, you know, the team that's prioritizing, you know, our supply needs and plans and distribution and equipment and different things that are out there in a city that are ongoing on a regular basis. And they're coordinating and making sure that we're all kept, you know, safe and we have the materials that we need. Then the facilities and supplies, they're coordinating with our facilities and DPW and, you know, really making, you know, a valiant effort of making sure that everything that we need in every area that needs to be cleansed and repeat cleansed and all of that is taken care of. Then of course our business liaisons, you know, Mr. Mayor had spoken briefly on that, but it's just vital. You know, these businesses are really, it's concerning and it's alarming. So we're going to see if there's, you know, a way that we can, you know, help support them and keeping them open so that they can get, you know, be part of delivery systems and, you know, other means to keep them financially afloat. So we have a business liaison attached to that. Then we have a communication liaison, which is really the point person for all of the division heads to really kind of communicate through so that it kind of comes up the chain so that we're all hearing the needs of each of these division department heads that, you know, we're there for them and that we, because business still has to continue, even if we're doing it remotely, it still has to continue. Then of course the financial aspect of things, which is vital and, you know, we're really working really hard to make sure that everything is getting documented so that, you know, we potentially can recoup. I mean, we're really pretty confident that this is going to happen, but that's a wait, you know, a waiting game as people know. And then public information, we're communicating to the public, this is ongoing. We are having daily calls with the public communication team so that we're putting everything in place and so the public is hearing on a daily basis from a press release, everything that's going down every single day. And it changes, not just daily, right now it's changing hourly. So when you may be seeing something, you're like, no, no, that wasn't, it's like, we'll get it. We promise you, we're on top of it. But sometimes it's so fluid and it's so quick, you know, that by the time something goes out, it's changing. So once again, we're here for you, we're here to answer to you and for you. And if there's any questions after you talk, you know, after Dr. Kong gives an opportunity to speak, I'll be more than happy to answer anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanton. Dr. Kong.
Hi, I don't, I don't need that much time to talk, but I just want to echo the sentiments that have already been expressed. I think Mara Rigo and Kim have done an outstanding job in rising to the occasion and being prepared for and then responding to such a fast-moving pandemic. This is uncharted territory. This is something that is very, we're in a very unique time in our city, in our country and in the world. So things are happening at a breakneck speed and we're trying to respond to them as fast as the news comes out to us. All I'm trying to do is stay as informed as possible with the right resources, the CDC, the MassDPH, and try and understand, you know, how fast this is spreading and, you know, who's recovering, who's potentially not recovering. And shout out to Carol Donovan, who is also a fantastic resource for me as she is the one controlling Maven and she's really boots on the ground for me to understand, you know, not if, but I guess when someone in our city will unfortunately have the virus. So that's all I want you to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And you gave us a tremendous amount of information. I'm not sure if any councils have anything to say or any questions. I did, a councilor, right now.
Thank you, and I want to thank you all for what you're doing. I know how hot it is. Thank you to the mayor. My question is, pop statement, pop question. And one of the things that I think that people need to know is that there was a form that went out on Facebook asking for people to sign up and actually basically help as a volunteer in this pandemic. One of the things that I'd like to put forward that I'm sure Dr. Kong will understand more than anybody is that we have many people that are in this community that are medical professionals from other countries, but may not have actually been able to license yet. We need to identify them. We need to get them on board because in the event that we have to treat in place, which is a good possibility considering the availability of ICU beds in town and around the state. So do we have a plan to deal with treating in place, number one, if we have to, which is something that was part of the 2004 SARS protocol? So I'm just wondering where we are with that.
So I can't specifically talk about the treatment, treating in place plans, but I can say that part of the reason why we have an outreach team is to exactly do that, right? Identify folks who can help and make sure that we're, we're prepared. That's something that I think I would look to the kind of medical folks to see whether or not we're, we're prepared for that. But I think as, as Kim noted, what we want to do is make sure we're doing the outreach and we have the, the structure in place as a, as a community to be able to respond and have and be proactive, right? And go find people who are going to be helpful if this kind of breaks the way that I think everyone kind of thinks it will, right? And if this happened, you know, if this becomes the, it already is an issue, it already is a problem, right? And if it, if it becomes a bigger problem in the community on a local basis, we'll be prepared for that.
The other question that I have, and this is more toward you, Mara Rigo, if you would take a second. And thank you for being so gracious with your emails, the same thing with Rizuke and Bob Mara. As far as I know at this point, Stop and Shop is having specific hours for our seniors. Is there a way that we can do something for pretty much like Market Basket if it hasn't been already? If so, can we announce it now? And I got one more thing after that.
So we've been making those contacts with our business folks to kind of push them and say, hey, is this something that you can do? I know Stop and Shop did announce around four o'clock this evening that they would have dedicated hours for folks over 60 years old. My hope is that Market Basket will follow suit and, and we've already been in touch with our promises to make sure that they're either prepared for additional home deliveries or that they're prepared for the increase in demand that they're going to, that they're going to see. So those conversations are happening and that's part of the importance of, again, to go back to the, to the response team and having that infrastructure in place to know that who's, who's responsible for that and make sure that it's getting done. Those contacts business-wise have been, have been made and there's an ongoing conversation. I think things are really fluid as, you know, with everything that has anything to do with coronavirus, everything's really fluid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions. One is for Kim and the other one would be for the mayor. My first question is, a person wakes up hypothetically tomorrow morning, they have a high fever, they have some of the symptoms of coronavirus. What is in place for those people? Where do they go? How do they get tested?
Well, that's actually a question for Dr. Kong. I got you. Great question. Right now, the recommendation is to call their primary care doctor. A lot of clinics have different protocols in place. At MGH and the Brigham, we have a, we have created a specific phone triage flow sheet. Like it's literally like, here's your questions, check yes and no. And then the computer will spit out using the current MassDPH and CDC guidelines for testing, who is eligible for testing. We have clinics at both Mass General and Brigham. I can't speak for CHA or other.
Excuse me, you say Mass General, you're including Mass General Revere?
Yeah. Mass General, so any Mass General site, no matter what city, Chelsea, Revere, partners, yeah, basically all of partners. We have a COVID testing site and patients will get called to, you know, basically just get triaged again and make sure they're appropriate for testing because again, test kits remain limited. I hope that gets better soon, but test kits remain limited. So there's specific criteria in place for who qualifies for testing. Even if you don't qualify for testing, if your symptoms are, I'll tell you right now, if you have a fever and a cough, I'm going to be telling you to quarantine for 14 days and you can't go to work or go anywhere public until you are asymptomatic for at least one to two days after that 14-day period. So even though we're not testing, even though we right now don't have the ability to do widespread testing, we are still working under the assumption that these patients could have COVID and they will be asked to quarantine.
I need to interrupt you. Thank you. If you just, Dr. Kong, if you would further, if I may, please, please further go and expand upon those people who have shortness of breath, what they should do at that point?
Yeah, so if patients are, let's say, less than 70 or 65 years old, they don't have lung disease, but they have a fever and a cough, they, if they are not a healthcare worker, if they don't have like a travel history, they'll most likely be asked to quarantine at home. If they're a little bit more high risk, if they do have shortness of breath, we will refer to the ED and we will page the bio-threat pager to let them know that they're coming in to the ED because there's still, there's still a subset of patients. Thankfully, many of them do not require hospitalization, but some of them do, some of them will as this gets worse. Right now, there's only 15 folks hospitalized in Massachusetts, or well, rather in Boston, 10 at MGH 5 at the Brigham for this, but there are many others. I think the count as of 4:00 PM today at the DPH website is 197 patients who have confirmed positive for COVID. So only 15 of those have been in the hospital. So everyone else is self-isolating. So far, no deaths, which is, which is good. But yes, if your symptoms are critical, you will be asked to go to the emergency room and you will most likely be hospitalized and obviously tested.
Thank you. My next question is for the mayor, if I may. Mr. Mayor, and this is not hypothetical because I can imagine that there are cases like this in existence around this city and throughout the country and the Commonwealth, et cetera. Let's, let's take a, a single parent that works every day, sends their children to school, schools are closed, they can't do that anymore. Obviously, this would prohibit them from going to work. What is in the pipeline right now through the federal government of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? I turn on the TV at night and I hear 50 billion, 30 billion, 20 billion. And I'd like to know what they can expect and when they can expect it. Some type of assistance that would enable them to stay at home and also have protection from not losing their position down the road and monetarily, what is in the pipeline?
So I'll say this right now, from a state or federal level, we haven't heard much about that, about folks for, the folks that are, that are looking for childcare or have difficulty because they're a single parent and because they have to, they have to work. My, my sense is that today the governor announced a small business loan or a small business, a piece of legislation that would provide some support for small businesses. I think that as time goes on, and again, I hate to keep saying this is a fluid situation, but as time goes on, you're going to see that the impacts that, that we have through residents who, who have issues with childcare, that those are going to be real and they're going to, they're going to present themselves in a big way throughout the, throughout the, not only the city, the state, but the country. So this is part of the reason why we're even asking for an appropriation is so that we can be prepared for things that are going to impact our residents. There is going to be, there's already an impact to everyone's quality of life at this point, but there's going to be a much bigger impact as businesses close, as business halts. We know that there are going to be people that are going to be negatively impacted by that. And what we want to do is make sure that we're prepared to help folks and that's why we have somebody dedicated to not only the business community, but to vulnerable populations. And we have contacts on that, on that level that we can make sure that we're prepared for a longer period of time. I mean, the president just said, we're looking to get through this by July or August, which I think was, was really eye-opening for a lot of people because folks had said a few weeks, a couple of months maybe, but to think of that timeline, it's an extended period of time. So we, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I think that, that we cannot, and one thing that we're, we've been clear, I've been clear to my team about, and I think everyone understands, is that we can't wait for federal or state action, that we have to be prepared ourselves, we have to be ready ourselves. And that's why things like the appropriation that's before you are before you so that we can start to, to move in that, in that direction. So in terms of a particular plan, I wouldn't say we have anything particularly ready, but, but.
As the mayor had suggested, that we do have somebody on staff in the emergency response team that part of their responsibility is to seek the resources out there because we're hearing that there's going to be some form of emergency unemployment available. So we're looking towards working with the unemployment agency, bringing in maybe kind of a benefit advocate, you know, just really putting pieces in place to really stop this process.
Is there a general contact number out there that people that are experiencing these problems or will experience these problems in the ensuing weeks and months can call?
Mass.gov is right now, mass.gov has a lot.
That's great, but locally, that's a, that's a great point. What we're encouraging folks to do is call 311, but in the coming days and probably weeks, and this is something that we'll, we'll talk about, is having a dedicated line for folks who are impacted by, by COVID and both.
That's what I was referencing.
Businesses, residents, just so that there's a dedicated place where either email, phone number and, and other kind of information can be disseminated and we can, we can get feedback from, from residents.
Thank you very much.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Morabito.
Thank you, Ms. President. I was actually going to ask about the dedicated line. Mr. Mayor, are there any active measures that police and firefighters are taking to protect themselves right now?
Yep, so there are, through you, the counselor, there are some relatively basic things of social distancing wise, right? Roll call is now outside. Roll call is being, taking place in police officers' cruisers. And of course, there are, you know, other measures that are being taken. And we've made sure that, and we will be making sure, again, this is a fluid situation, that things like enforcement of public spaces, you know, I mentioned this on the call earlier today, that, you know, if we get a 65-degree day, we may have an issue with a lot of kids congregating or people congregating in certain places. We want to kind of discourage that. So we'll have to have a safety, a public safety plan in place for that and the chief is, is working on, on those kinds of things. So even in terms of enforcement of the restaurant kind of shutdown that the governor ordered, we're figuring out how that works and how, you know, with municipal inspections department and with the police and, and our licensing board, we're making sure that we're all coordinating and on the same page. So there are some smaller things that have done, have been done around social distancing and things that are, will keep people hopefully healthy. And then some bigger logistical issues that, that we're dealing with and that we know will, will arise as time goes on.
One more question. Thank you for that answer. So I know you mentioned economic impact and it's going to get, it's going to worsen as time goes on. One thing. One thing I suggest is maybe look into possible grace periods or late fees. Obviously, not right now, but eventually, that would be one way of helping citizens in the future.
I look back at our new director of finance. So, so that is something, everything is on the table, right? And so you'll see popping up around City Hall what look like mailboxes for payment, right? So that folks can drop off their payments if necessary so they don't have to necessarily come in, into the building. But we are looking at every avenue to waive convenience fees for online bill payment and potentially we will have to look at potentially waiving late fees if we get to a point where, you know, this is an extended closure and City Hall is closed for an extended period of time and we know that there's an economic impact that goes along with, with things being shut down for a long period of time, we would certainly be sympathetic and, and kind of contemplate and, and, and think about waiving late fees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I honestly want to thank you. I know earlier you said it's your job, but there's a big difference. You, you haven't, it is your job, but you haven't been reactive, you've been proactive and you've really taken the bull by the horn, so I admire that. I admire your leadership and your team.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ganaso.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the same vein, Mr. Mayor, in terms of public safety, Revere Fire Department, Revere Police Department, God forbid something were to happen to the membership of, and I'm talking like wild spread, the good majority of the membership of the fire and police department are unable to perform their duties. Do we have a game plan in place to protect our community?
So we do, and I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go into the specifics of that, but that has been a point of conversation that I've had with both chiefs, especially after the, the incident in, I think it was New York City where an entire firehouse ended up testing positive, I think, or at some point, firefighters. So we want to be preparing for the worst, right? And what, you know, the worst is pretty dire when you think about it, especially when there's an international pandemic that's involved. So yes, that is a topic of conversation, something that we're kind of thinking about and, and planning for. And, and there will be, you know, at some point, which I've really appreciated from everybody, and, and I failed to mention my own office because they have, they've always been there 100% and they've always been all hands on deck, but, and, and they've done an incredible job during this trying time, but everyone's all hands on deck. And so whatever that looks like for our community, I feel I'm confident that we have folks that are professional, resilient, and will get the job done. And unfortunately, we, we are thinking about those, those worst-case scenarios.
Yeah, I'm not an alarmist. And I certainly want to downplay that just as much as possible to not frighten our senior citizens and, and, you know, namely, our residents. And this is an important factor and I think that we have to work as feverishly as we can. You even tried to send me home this morning.
I did.
Taking care of a senior citizen. You said, what are you doing here? I said, I'm out here doing my job, you know, and, and, you know, I don't look as myself as a senior citizen because I'm, I'm very active, but I do appreciate the fact that we are ready to go with our seniors and I think that what you said to you tonight will inform our community. And, and I think it's day by day, as everyone has stated, I've watched this and saturated myself with as much information as I could, and we got some good valid information here this evening.
Well, that makes sense why you had to get out of the house, I think, right? That's why you're in City Hall.
Oh, I'm glad you were trying to protect me. I like, I like that.
Always looking out for my fellow residents.
Thank you. God bless. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Ganaso. And if I can just bring up a few points of information from the council. I know that there's been some communications on large gatherings and it's gone down from 25 and just recently President Trump had suggested recommendations of no more than 10. As a city council, tonight we are actually participating live on GoToMeeting, so the, we will be, we are going to be able to do web meetings and that may have to be something more of the future, especially as this continues. And we do have a participant online, Councilor Novoselsky is participating from home, so he is not absent, he's present at the meeting. He doesn't have, he is voting through the support of Rubin, but Councilor Novoselsky took the precautions and stayed home. And next week, when we have our following meeting, we have some, plenty more meetings tonight, we're going to hope that more, more of us will participate from home so that we don't have to have any issues with that assembly.
Mr. President, just quickly, just really quickly on that.
Okay, yes.
I am prepared and will be probably participating from future meetings from, from home or from virtually because I do think that it's important and it's important for us to, to set the standard, right, in the community to show that we're, we are taking this seriously. I, I kind of reluctantly am here tonight, but I, I, I do think that it's important for us to set the tone as a community that we're taking this seriously, that we do need to be at home, we, we can leverage technology as much, much as possible. We are doing that in terms of the, the business of the city and we should do that for the, for the business of the council as well, so. And, and I will say that other boards and commissions and meetings, in fact, tomorrow night's school committee meeting will most likely be virtual, and so we are looking at boards and commissions being able to, to do the business that they need to do. License commission is a great example. They, they, they need to get licenses done and, and business needs to continue. Whatever we can do to leverage technology and be able to do business virtually, we are, we are doing, so.
Correct. And tonight will serve as a bit of a dry run, a test run, and I know that you can go on the Revere City calendar and click on the link if you want to follow the meeting the rest of the way through the, the webinar. And I know that there's some, I think Dr. Kelly is going to be signing in. And the last point on this COVID-19, I really appreciate your response, but I did want to mention, just giving kudos, although it's way too early to give many kudos because I know this fight's going to be going on for some time. Just talking to some colleagues in the city and, and at work, they've mentioned, colleague specifically that deals with pandemic response, and she said that she'd been called by so many communities for efforts and help, and she's glad to hear that, she heard Revere had a pretty good plan in place and has the right, not just a plan, but has the right people in place, so very, very, thank you very much for being here because some communities are really, they're, they're not, they're not set up the way we have been, so. We're lucky to have that and I hope that we don't need to go too far, but we're in good shape. Councilor Tondo?
Sorry. Through you to the mayor, Kim, Dr. Khan, anybody who can answer the question, as we've seen on TV, the bold and, and new approach with a public-private partnership of providing test kits. I know Roche will be rolling them out pretty soon if they're not doing it now, CVS, Walgreens and so forth. I understand Walmart as well. Where is our coordination with that and is, as the smile comes off?
I will say this, that there will most likely be conversations about, about mobile test sites, and I know that other mayors are, are fielding questions and interest in having mobile sites. I think the big, the big question about that is around logistics, right? And making sure that if there are pop-up, drive-up test sites that, that they be done in a really transparent and clear and, in a way that the folks from public safety to public health and everyone can kind of be on, on board with. But I know that those conversations are happening, and so that will probably be something that happens relatively quickly. I, I think as soon as, you know, what we've heard is maybe as soon as later this week, there'll be real, like, here's a plan for a, a, a test site in a parking lot, for example. And so what that looks like, I know that can, that can be something that is going to raise a lot of, a lot of concern and be something that we really have to think thoroughly through, but I, I am anticipating that those kind of conversations.
So part of my, my questioning with that is that it should be coordinated with Cambridge Child Alliance as well as the Mass General because.
That's why we're so lucky to have Dr. Khan here. But.
As well as the other institutions that serve the city because we're going to be able to help vitally offload those people that don't need to be tested right away versus those that do need to be tested because they are showing critical signs such as shortness of breath and a high fever. That being said, I mean, the model that they're using out in California is working very, very well. The model that they're using in South Korea is what we're using here in the States, and that's something that we look to, to kind of roll out. But that said, that's probably the biggest piece of this puzzle because that's the only way that you're going to blunt that spike, is you've got to test them right away and you've got to figure out who's who and self-isolate. And if I'm wrong, Doctor, please correct me. So the quicker that measure gets off the ground, the, the quicker we're going to be. And like I said to you before, I'm home, so I'm more than happy to help.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. President. I appreciate, it is too early to be patting each other on the back, but I want everyone to know that we are prepared and, and we have a great team in place to make sure that we get through this and we can then gather with more than 10 people in a room sometime in the future.